Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Beth Chubb, the wastewater section chief in the Bureau of Water Resources with the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, also known as MASDEP. And we are holding an official public hearing under Massachusetts General Laws Chapter 30A. I am the hearing officer for this hearing. This hearing is being recorded and conducted remotely in a Zoom webinar format. The recording will be posted on MASDEP's website. Some Spanish, Portuguese, and Cape Verdean interpretive services are available from DEP staff and a hired interpreter for those who wish to provide verbal comments. MASDEP is not able to provide interpretation of all comments over the course of the night. The interpreters will now introduce themselves and ask if any interpretation services will be needed, starting first with Maria Pino doing Spanish.
Buenas noches. Yo soy Maria Pino. Trabajo con el Departamento de Protección Ambiental de Massachusetts. And I should probably start with English. My name is Maria Pino. I work for MASDEP, Department of Environmental Protection, and today I will provide in Spanish translations. I will translate what Mary Beth indicated. Buenas noches. Soy Mary Beth Chubb, del Departamento de Protección Ambiental de Massachusetts, también conocido como MASDEP. Hoy celebraremos una audiencia pública oficial conforme a las leyes generales de Massachusetts en el capítulo 30A. Soy el oficial de audiencia para esta audiencia. La audiencia se está grabando y realizando de forma remota en un formato de seminario web en Zoom. La grabación se publicará en el sitio de web de MASDEP. Algunos servicios de interpretación en español, portugués, y cabo verdeano están disponibles por parte del personal de DEP y un intérprete contratado, si es necesario, para aquellos que deseen proporcionar comentarios verbales. MASDEP no puede proporcionar interpretación de todos los comentarios durante el transcurso de la noche. Los intérpretes se están presentando hoy y comenzando con María Pino en español. Flavia en portugués.
Yes, my name is Flavia Jacobs. I'll be translating the Portuguese version. Buena noche. Mi nombre es Flavia Jacobs. Soy analista ambiental del Departamento de Protección Ambiental de Massachusetts, también conocido como MASDEP. Estamos realizando una audiencia pública oficial sobre las leyes generales de Massachusetts, C30A. Esta audiencia está siendo grabada y conduzida remotamente en formato Zoom webinar. La grabación será publicada en el sitio de MASDEP. Algunos servicios de interpretación en español, portugués, y cabo verdeanos estarán disponibles por la equipo de DEP y de un intérprete contratado, si necesario, para aquellos que desean ofrecer comentarios verbales. O MASDEP no fornecerá interpretación de todos los comentarios a lo largo de esta audiencia. Si alguien necesita de asistencia con traducción de esta audiencia pública, por favor levante la mano el icono de Zoom.
Hello, good evening. My name is Josanne Loops, Cape Verdean interpreter, and I will proceed to say what Mary Beth Chubb said. Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Josanne. Se debe ser en el tiempo de la noche y saber que Mary Beth. Buena noche. Soy Mary Beth Chubb, del Departamento de Protección Ambiental de Massachusetts, también conocido como MASDEP, y en su letra realizo una audiencia pública oficial sobre las leyes generales de Massachusetts, C30A. A mí es auditor para aquella audiencia, que la audiencia les sea grabada y conducida remotamente en formato de Zoom webinar. Que la grabación les sea bien ser postada en el sitio de MASDEP. Algunos servicios de interpretación de español, portugués, y cabo verdeanos sean disponibilizados para la equipo de DEP y un intérprete contratado, si necesario, para aquellos que desee ofrecer comentarios verbales. MASDEP es capaz de ofrecer interpretación de todos los comentarios durante la noche. Si tiene alguien, algún participante que necesita de asistencia de interpretación en el criollo, por favor me levante la mano virtualmente usando el funcion de los escáneres. Gracias y buena noche. Thank you.
Thank you. Has anyone, did anyone indicate that they needed interpretative services? Maria?
No.
No. Fabia?
No, I didn't see anybody.
And Josanne?
Not that I've noticed so far.
Thank you. No one has indicated they will need interpretative assistance, and I will proceed with the introduction of the hearing. The purpose of this hearing is to accept public comments on MASDEP's draft proposed amendments to the Title V regulations at 310 CMR 15 to establish natural resource nitrogen-sensitive areas and new watershed permitting regulations at 314 CMR 21. To minimize background noise and interference, the host has muted all remote participants and turned off the chat function. We will hear first from elected and appointed officials who should raise their virtual hands now if they wish to comment. You will be unmuted in the order you raise your hand. Please then turn on your video and state your name and affiliation. Please remember to unmute and provide your comments. If you are on a cellphone, you can use star nine to raise and lower your hand and star six to toggle mute and unmute. All commenters will be limited to three minutes. MASDEP will not be responding to your comments because this is a public hearing. We are only here to listen and record the comments. MASDEP encourages you to submit comments by email to DEP.talks@MAS.gov. Please include Title V and watershed permit in the subject line. The public comment period closes at 5:00 PM on January 30, 2023. I will now open the hearing for oral comments. If there are elected or appointed officials here who wish to provide comments, please raise your virtual hand now if you have not done so already.
Mary Beth, I am currently seeing no raised hands.
Thank you, Tori. I'm not seeing any raised hands. So last call for any public officials who wish to make a comment. Okay, thank you. Now we will hear comments from all others who wish to comment. Any individual who wishes to comment should raise their virtual hand now. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, well, we'll go to Andrew. If you wish to comment as an individual, please raise your virtual hand now. So first we will have Andrew Gottlieb, followed by David Dow.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I'm Andrew Gottlieb, the executive director of the Association to Preserve Cape Cod, speaking to you today in support of the regulatory draft that you were promulgated. We know on Cape Cod that the primary cause of water quality degradation is septic systems. Septic systems that under today's rules are legal and of which we are seeing more and more on a daily basis cited on Cape Cod, which is actually making our water quality problems worse. APCC just released its fourth annual State of the Waters Report where we document that water quality is bad on Cape Cod and it continues to get worse. Over 90% of our estuaries have poor water quality, and we know the source of that water quality degradation are septic systems. Your choice to move forward with regulatory changes to Title V are necessary in order to enable the towns and the region to stop degrading water quality on the Cape. They are a necessary step and paired with your watershed permit regulations are an appropriate response to the known science for Cape Cod that indicates that municipal solutions scale are the most appropriate means available to achieve the nitrogen reductions that we need. Your choice to pair these with the watershed permit regs to encourage towns to obtain watershed permits and therefore hold the need to upgrade septic systems in advance is an appropriate response to a complex set of considerations that we have. The Cape has numerous financial tools available to it that help mitigate the costs, both at the homeowner's scale and at the municipal scale of upgrading wastewater treatment. It is something that can and needs to be done. And we would recommend and have formally commented this effect today in formal comments submitted that the department consider narrowing the applicability of the watershed permit regs and the Title V revisions to Cape Cod, not only because the Cape has tools available to it to mitigate the finances that are not available elsewhere in the Commonwealth, but also because the science is so crystal clear on Cape Cod that we have to deal with this problem. And that may not necessarily be the issue in other parts of the state, and we would be reluctant to see the gains that can be made for Cape Cod with these upgraded regulatory requirements lost to opposition from other parts of the state that are dealing with the issue differently than we might be. In sum, we support your regulations. You cannot allow the existing code to remain in place. Doing nothing with these regulations is not an option, and we encourage you to move forward expeditiously with these regulatory revisions as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be David Dow, followed by Ellen Driscoll.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I'm David Dow. I'm a resident of East Falmouth, Massachusetts, in the Waco Bay watershed. I'm a retired scientist from the Fisheries Lab in Woods Hole, Massachusetts. During my time at the Fisheries Lab, I participated in the Waco Bay watershed ecological risk assessment project, which determined that nutrients, nitrogen in Waco Bay and phosphorus in Assuma Pond are the major ecological stressors in the watershed. And I actually wrote the section of the EPA report on phosphorus pollution in Assuma Pond. I wanted to say that, in my estimation, the success of this endeavor would be to restore yew grass beds and base color populations in nitrogen-impacted watersheds in Cape Cod and elsewhere. In order to do this, I feel that the MASDEP Title V regulations and wetland permit are too inflexible. And the towns need to decide on their own how to respond to meet their total maximum daily load requirements to reduce nitrogen, to improve water quality, and restore habitats of wild places, wild creatures. In the case of Falmouth, the Great Pond watershed is under consideration for using sewer and expanding the wastewater treatment plant. In the Three Bays watershed, they're doing pilot projects on use of IA septic systems to replace existing cesspools and septic systems that don't remove nitrogen. Other towns might choose to use pervert reactive barriers, aquaculture, wetland conversion from cranberry bogs, eco-toilet, or other decentralized approaches to meet their reduction targets. I feel that the towns should be able to choose amongst these options and not just be given a choice between the two options listed in the MASDEP proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just a general reminder for everyone making a comment. Once you are made a panelist, please unmute and turn your camera on and state your name and, if applicable, any affiliation. Next, we will have Ellen Driscoll, followed by Patrick Otten.
Hello. This is more what I'm used to. So I have to express my ignorance. I just heard of this last October when we were, I was campaigning for someone who was running for office, and that person who was elected official had no idea about this regulation. I'm from Southeast of Massachusetts, from Mattapoiset, and sympathize with what I've heard about the Cape. I grew up on the Cape, love the Cape. And we are similar in terms of having communities that are on the water that have a lot of cottages and stuff. That's not exactly where I live. In Mattapoiset, because our homes were spread out, not on top of each other, like some of the cottages you might see down the Cape. But my ignorance is that I did not know about it at the fall. I still don't feel I know a lot. What really is, and all I have is a lot of questions, and I don't feel like the community has been told, most of the people I know in my area, this is a surprise to them, including my elected officials and those people that are appointed in town. They are like trying to catch up with what's going on with this new thing. And so I guess that's what bothers me is why are so many communities caught off guard? If this is some kind of legislative thing, why is it that my legislators didn't know about it? Why is it that the towns didn't know about it till it's thrust upon them, and they're trying to catch up? Are there funds to help people to make these changes? You know, if you're asking people to come up with $50,000 to fix their septic system, some of these people that I was holding signs with, they had already fixed their system, but not to meet the new criteria that's just established, and they just did it, let's say, two years ago. So how is the state going to respond to this? Those are my questions. I am more in the dark because I don't know a lot about this, and I feel the town needs, the state needs to do a lot to educate all of us as to what the expectations are and where the money's coming from to do this. And I'm not against cleaning up our water supplies. I certainly want that to happen, but I think we need a lot more information. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would ask, Tori, could you put in the chat the Title V regulation webpage?
Yes, will do.
And also my email address for questions. The Title V regulation webpage has a lot of information available on it. Next, we will have Patrick Otten, and if I mispronounce anyone's name, I apologize, followed by Bob Schulte.
Yes, hello. Good evening. Thank you. My name is Patrick Otten. I live in East Harwich on the Pleasant Bay watershed. You know, the complaints I've heard so far from the towns in opposition and complaints are cost and timeline. However, I personally congratulate DEP for establishing the regulations controlling into pollution on Cape Cod. Thank you. Please do not be persuaded, deterred, or bullied into changing or relaxing the regulations based on complaints of economic hardship. It is time for all humans living on Cape Cod to be held responsible for our actions. You know, history is full of examples of corporations abusing the environment for profit. Now it is our turn to pay the price for living in a fragile, vulnerable environment we call home. That's Cape Cod. Why do we live on Cape Cod? We live here for the ponds, the estuaries, the embayments, the woodlands, the seashore, and the wildlife. So please, please protect these to your fullest capacity possible. I totally support you and want to know what I can do to further, further caring for Cape Cod. So thank you.
Thank you. Looks like Bob Schulte put his hand down, or did he already get moved?
He put his hand down.
Okay. Next, we will have Susan Dangle, followed by Jonathan Linker. Can you unmute, Susan?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. And thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Susan Dangle. I'm the president of the Save Mashpee-Wakeby Pond Alliance. I'm a resident of Mashpee. Our group is a coalition of concerned citizens who love Mashpee-Wakeby Pond and are determined to ensure its preservation, protection, and enhancement as a recreational and economic focal point for our community. We were formed in 2021 after one of the largest lakes on Cape Cod, located in the Papadessa watershed, went under an advisory for cyanobacteria. People and pets were advised to stay out of the water. Sadly, these cyanobacteria outbreaks have continued. We have now amassed nearly 270 Facebook followers and another 150 folks who receive our newsletter monthly. We applaud the forthcoming MASDEP regulations and appreciate your effort to bring them into law. We would like to suggest that you implement the strongest possible regulations that require upgraded septic systems and other wastewater treatment systems. We implore you to close loopholes that would allow cities and towns to avoid their obligations, and we urge you to advocate for funding so that our town can make these changes a reality. We ask that you implement expedited timelines appropriate to reverse the current severely compromised water quality conditions. We would also like to point out that as pond residents, IA septic systems will not fix our cyanobacteria problems. It's the phosphorus, not the nitrogen, that is choking our pond. We are dependent on the installation of sewers for our properties. Further complicating our situation is the fact that it will take sewers from the town of Sandwich to offer help to the Wakeby Basin. From your presentation to the Mashpee Select Board in July of 2022, we heard that neighboring towns must honor their intermunicipal agreements in this effort, which is critical. We are hopeful that these bold changes will be approved. We are actually pleasantly surprised to see that Pleasant Bay watershed has actually voluntarily entered into a watershed agreement with the DEP. We know that the four towns of Orleans and Harwich and Chatham and Brewster are already in the fifth year of reducing nitrogen, and they have the results to show it. It's not only septic. It does involve all sorts of other alternatives that can help to reduce the nitrogen. We know that the Cape Cod Commission recently approved also the freshwater initiative to develop a measurement like the nitrogen TDML for phosphorus. It's our hope that this new measurement will be implemented with your regulations with speed once established. Thank you again for your considering our comments.
Thank you. Next is Jonathan Linker, who will be followed by, the theme is Murphy MI.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can.
My name is John Linker. I'm a summer resident in Osterville. I have been doing some basic demographic work using the work from the Shabel Pond that was done by the Barnstable Water Coalition and the Chatham and Three Bays work done by the Cape Cod Commission, all of which I think are excellent studies. The conclusion is that using the World Health Organization EPA and Chesapeake Authority estimate of an annual 4.5 kilogram of nitrogen generated by a human and a 20 to 30% removal rate of nitrogen by the current compliance septic system, retrofitting the summer houses will only have a minimal impact on nitrogen in the, certainly in the Three Bays area. For example, four people living continuously in the summer season for four months, the season is actually July, August, and 15 days on either side, or three months will generate 4.5 kilograms of untreated nitrogen. The 90-home project projected for Osterville would therefore remove about 400 kg out of the 422,000 target removal for the Three Bays area. Hence, with good publicity, even with good publicity, such a program will have minimal impact. To have a 20% impact, 1,100 of these houses would need to be converted, something not possible in the five-year period. A full-time resident family of four generates three times as much. We should therefore target areas where we can see worthwhile results first, probably with a sewer and installation plan, which I'm hearing from these other commenters. They all sort of feel is where you're going to end up being anyway. However, these summer houses consume huge quantities of water. If the standard for a full-time resident family of four is about 69,000 gallons per year, these houses use seven to 10 times as much in a three-to-four-month season. A system of progressive taxation with seasonal rates would both reduce water use and fund nitrogen remediation projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It seems Murphy MI put their hand down.
Correct.
Thank you. So we will go to Janine Jenny, who will be followed by John Boonavith. And again, apologies for any mispronunciation of names.
Janine, if you could please unmute. Thank you. Janine, I see you're unmuted now, but we cannot hear you. Can you hear us? Mary Beth, do you want to move on to John while Janine works out the tech issues?
Sure. Okay, next we will have John Boonavith, followed by Maureen Floyd. Janine, we cannot hear you.
Hear me now?
Yes, we can. So John, if you can please wait, we'll give Janine the opportunity. Go ahead, Janine.
Um, I just want to go on record. I'm a Dartmouth resident, and I've been going to a lot of the local meetings here. I went to UMass Dartmouth. And, you know, I find it interesting that the first speaker tonight was Andrew, sorry if I mispronounced your name, Goldbody. But I just want to say, I know he was part of the NSA Subcommittee that helped put these regulations in place, but I want to read to you very quickly a statement that he was made in the New Bedford Light. regulations in place, but I want to read to you very quickly, um, a statement that he was made in the New Bedford Light where it says Andrew Galotti, the Executive Director of the Association of to Preserve Cape Cod, previously worked for the State Environmental Agency and served on the Subcommittee that helped develop the regulations. At a panel discussion on wastewater in November, he said that thousands of septic upgrades would be a huge task to accomplish in just five years, and anybody who really knows anything doubts that this would solve the nitrogen problem. I find it really hard to believe that there is so much dishonesty. There are so many comments that are contradicting one another. And as a single parent owning my own home, to think that I'm going to have to spend thirty-five to fifty thousand dollars to upgrade my septic system when you can't even prove that that is really where the nitrogen problem lies in the fact that even in Dartmouth, sixty percent of the land in Dartmouth is run by the state because it's farming. You're not talking about farming and composting and all those other things that are contributing to the nitrogen problem. I agree, we need to clean our water. I am not against that. What I'm against is targeting a group of people, homeowners, to give them a huge bill on their hands when that may not even solve the problem. And I just read to you a statement made by somebody that came up with these regulations. And I can tell you that Mark Rasmussen, the Buzzes Bay Coalition President, also sent out an email to all of his members stating the same thing, that these regulations and the five-year shove-it-down-your-throat septic system changes are not going to solve the problem. That, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we will go to John Boonavith, and he will be followed by Maureen Floyd.
Okay, there it is. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
There we go. My name is John Boonavith. I live in Born on Cape Cod. And I am in favor of upgrading the, the Title V regulations, but I am staunchly and vehemently opposed to the methodology being used to implement the regulation. Um, have the burden, any burden on the home property owners, uh, via either uh, directly or indirectly through betterments, um, is, is just totally inappropriate. There are many other ways that can be accomplished, such as now, when the sale of a property takes place or changes hands, there's additional revenues that are available. There's other things that can be done to abate some of the problems, such as curtailment of development. Um, the bottom line is, when it comes to Cape Cod, it is a fragile ecosystem, and it's overdeveloped. And it didn't happen overnight, and it seems to be an effort to try to make the problem go away overnight. It's just not going to happen. I think it's a foolhardy and foolishness to try to implement it in the way that's currently opposed, opposed. So I staunchly oppose, um, the regulation as it stands, uh, to, um, have any, any burden placed on the individual property owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Maureen Floyd, will be followed by, the name is Grove.
Hi, this is Maureen Floyd. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Um, we are residents of West Barnstable, and we bought our house in two thousand and nineteen, and it does have an IA system which we, you know, were happy to purchase. And I, and I'm, we are very, you know, pro-water quality and are supportive of, um, the purpose of this project. However, I just wanted to make sure people understand that at least with our IA system, and I'm not an engineer and I don't know, but we have in addition to the system, we pay annually for testing. And our testing is a little under a thousand dollars a year for two times a year. So I just think it's really important for people to be aware of the fact that if, if I am correct, that other IA systems would require annual testing, that, um, people are informed that that is something that is an ongoing cost associated with these, um, septic systems. And again, totally supportive. We, we bought our house that had this system in it, but I think it's only fair to make sure people are, um, educated on the ongoing cost of maintaining the system and reporting to the, um, Board of Public Health, I think, is who gets the information from the group that tests our system. So thanks so much.
Thank you. Next up is Grove, followed by Edwin McGuire. And if you are on the webinar and want to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you are on the phone and you would like to raise your hand, you can use star nine and then star six to mute and unmute.
Can I be heard?
Yes, you can.
Thanks. My name is Grove Harris. I'm a homeowner in West Hyanusport, and I really appreciate, um, this session and the community and different voices in it coming together to address what is part of not only a global climate emergency, but obviously a very dire, dire local one. And it's very clear to me in some of my work in international fora that we have got to exercise fantastic local leadership with incredible citizen involvement and with smart collaborative ways to make this affordable. I personally am interested in composting toilet technology, but I also know that, uh, when I last explored it, the requirements for testing and the costs and the, you know, and the coordination of the services to, to make that smooth for a homeowner did not seem to me to be in place at all. So I think if we're going to offer these as viable opportunities for a lot of people, there's got to be some collective work done, perhaps to reduce the prices, perhaps to help with some of the shopping that has to occur around these. Because as a homeowner on the Cape, I have not found it easy to do all the kinds of improvements on my home. There's a lot of questions. Um, so I'd like to see us do some collective work around that. I appreciate that this is a complicated scientific issue, but I'm afraid I want to boldly put out a very blunt intervention that could happen with public education in really short order. From what I understand, at least eighty percent of the nitrogen in human urine, which is the main source of the problem, I'm not referring now to the phosphorus and other complications, is released in the first morning pee of individuals. This is noted by the darker yellow color of pee. It is my understanding that if that pee is actually placed onto about a three-foot pile of oak leaves uh, in the yard, that would significantly reduce the nitrogen that went into the water table for anybody's system. So I just think that we are going to have to radically re-envision our relationship to our natural environment and that we have to explore all possible options, including no-cost ones that require a reframe around my idea of what sanitation is, because I'm way more interested in our whole watershed, but I am not as interested in the amount of searing that, uh, construction-wise, we think we want to potentially do and invest in. Given the nature of the climate emergency, I think we have to think outside of the box, uh, first, second, and third. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next will be Edwin McGuire, followed by Leslie Wackesser. And again, if you wish to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand. On the phone, you would do that by using star nine. Once made a panelist, please unmute, turn on your camera, and state your name and affiliation if applicable.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name is Ed McGuire. I live in Mashpee. I live on Great River, which it feeds into Walk White Bay. I think we all know there's a problem, and if you're denying it doesn't, that it's not caused by septic wet waste, I, I don't know where you're coming from. But the problem is there. I support the proposed regulation. The towns and the county, they have, they don't have the will of the desire to clean up the problem. If the state can do something to help move this along, that's what we need. It's, it's not going to go away. We do need the searing. But in the meantime, uh, we have to do something, sitting around doing nothing, which we've done for the last twenty-five years, thirty years. It's not an option anymore. It's going to cost people money, but that's just going to be a fact of life. Thank you for your time. I just wanted to know that I support your regulation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Leslie Wackesser, followed by Terry Crowley.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Hi, this is Paul and Leslie Wackesser. We're a Christian resident, uh, and we'd like to speak in opposition to these new regulations. Um, as some of the other people, the guests this evening has said, um, don't think there's been enough public outreach to the folks in town. Um, I've spoken with over fifty people just in my neighborhood area of my town, and that hadn't heard of it. I've only come across two that have heard of it. Uh, it seems to me that a lot of these people that are speaking out for it are somehow connected with environmental groups who send out news flyers and everything else. So they have a source that is informing them, where the general public doesn't seem to have any source that's informing them. Also, uh, I am a contractor by trade and own a contracting business, and let me just say that even if ten percent of the houses, as a contractor, if you implemented this regulation in our small town, you wouldn't be able to do ten percent of the houses in five years. There's simply not enough contractors. And we have a small town that is more scattered than, say, the Cape or anything else, but these are impossible, absolutely impossible timelines, unless you're planning on graduating every kid that in the next five years into contracting and excavation, they're just, they're un- likely scenarios to get done. It's just impossible. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Terry Crowley, and that is the last hand that I am seeing. If you are online and wish to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand. Um, we maintain the order of the hands being raised. And again, if you are on the phone, it is star nine to raise your hand.
Hey Terry, if you could please unmute and turn on your camera. Thanks.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Um, I would like to say, uh, my husband and I are residents of Westport, Mass. Um, we bought our house June of two thousand and twenty-one and had to install a brand-new septic system as part of the sale. At no time were we told or informed of this down-the-road plan for these nitrogen systems. I only found out about it through a neighbor the other day when I happened to be taking a walk. I would agree with the previous speaker, uh, that it sounds to me, and I've been listening to some of the recordings from previous meetings, that the environmental groups are emailing their folks and they're telling and informing people what to say who support it. But I have not had that privilege. Finding out from a neighbor as I go for a walk about a fifty thousand dollar bill that I might receive is not the way that this should be happening. I'm really disappointed and worried for myself and for my other friends and neighbors in Westport. This is a huge burden. It's my understanding that the DEP has known about this for twenty years and have sat on it and have not done their due diligence. And to come out now and put the burden on homeowners, my husband and I bought our house to retire. We put thirty thousand dollars into that septic system, and now you're telling me it's not good enough? It's not even eighteen months old. Please, I beg you to rethink this plan, restart this clock, and inform people so that everybody gets a chance to voice their opinion, not just the environmentalists, because I want the planet to be safe and clean too, but I also have to pay my bills. So for the people who aren't struggling out there, it's not so much of a burden, but for us regular folk who are just getting by day by day, it will be. Thanks for your time. Good night.
Thank you. Next we have Danielle Dolan, who will be followed by Anne with an E.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, DEP, for providing an additional public comment opportunity for the community on this incredibly important issue. My name is Danielle Dolan. I'm the Deputy Director for the Massachusetts Rivers Alliance. We're a five oh one C three nonprofit organization with eighty-five member organizations across the state who share the mission of protecting and restoring the rivers and streams of the Commonwealth. So I am one of those environmentalists that sends out information to our members to show up to these meetings, and I encourage all of you on this call, especially those of you who just recently learned about this issue, to please become a member of your local watershed group or other environmental organizations in your community, and you'll be more informed on these issues. Master Rivers Alliance enthusiastically supports DEP's proposed Title V and watershed permit regulations, which are critically necessary to protecting our coastal waterways. DEP has crafted a very elegant solution in having both options for individual septic system upgrades and community-wide programs. This way, interests on both sides can hold one another accountable to find the most equitable, cost-effective, and locally appropriate method for reducing nutrient pollution. While we're certainly sympathetic to the challenges and limitations of municipalities, wastewater treatment facilities, homeowners, and developers, we believe the regulations are very reasonable and attainable, if not overly generous to these interests at the expense of the environment. For too long, we have treated Massachusetts state national treasures like a sewage dump. If our ecosystems are going to sustain the impacts of climate change, we must first stop contributing to their damage and then reverse the damage that we've already caused. Timeline is not only generous, but excessive. Twenty years is far too long to wait to actually see water quality improvements. We urge DEP to expedite the compliance timeline and to promulgate these regulations as soon as possible. And thank you again for the opportunity to speak on this important issue.
Thank you. Next up is Anne with an E, and followed by Sean McDonald.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, thank you very much for doing this and for providing an opportunity to comment. I don't know very much. I'm one of those who's just kind of recently learned about this. Um, I am, uh, the trustee of my family's summer cottage in Falmouth that's been in our family since the late nineteen fifties, and, um, we're, we have the cottage open from June through mid-September, um, And I, like I said, I just learned about this and I'm not sure how to find out more information about it. I've read a few things online, um, talking about what one of the previous spoke speakers said about um, not being able to fulfill the demand both in equipment and supplies and workers in the timeline proposed. I fully want support trying to clean up all of the water. It's, it is a problem. We live on a lake, um, and I wanna see improvements in the water quality, but I would really appreciate more information and I'm just not sure where to go for that. Um, so, um, I'm not opposed to the costs. I feel like, um, you know, for me, for our family, we can take care of that. I relate to others who can't. Um, but, um, I just think having more time to learn about it and spread the word would be helpful. So that's my comments.
Thank you. Anne, if you can, if you have access to the chat, um, there is a web link in there that will provide you with more information on these regulatory, proposed regulatory changes. Next, we have Sean McDonald, who will be followed by Shauna Heisler.
Hello?
Hi.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my name is Sean McDonald. I'm with the town of Dartmouth. I'm a member of the select board. Um, I sent in a letter, uh, in the comment for the comments, um, and I'm not going to go over that letter in its entirety, but I do wanna make a few points here. Number one, um, it's not very, it's not inconceivable that watershed groups are in favor of this. I suspect and I would hope that they would be in favor of this. But my only problem is, is they're not going to pay for this. Dartmouth, Westport, and other communities on the Cape uh, have a um, false pretense that we are wealthy and we can afford this. That's totally untrue. There are many, many, many working families in these areas that are going to struggle to pay for this. But one of the things I do wanna pro, I do wanna follow on is the process. The process and the whereabouts of, of this came about is not being told to the general public. June first, Commissioner, then Commissioner Sueberg sent a letter out to the, um, the communities regarding the proposed, uh, regulations. Five days prior was a motion to stay agreement by the Conservation Law Foundation and, uh, some communities on the Cape to promulgate these regulations. And part of that promulgation would be to have a comment period um, at some point in time and to have the DEP uh, complete these regulations by the end of the business date in January and to have a sit-down, uh, status report with the court for these regulations. How DEP has a comment period in between two massive holidays where people are totally oblivious or at least focused on the holidays and their families is beyond reproach. And nobody is telling, DEP is not telling you the real reason behind this. DEP has known about this problem for years. And I, for one, as a member of the select board, will fight this and go back to the drawing board and bring in municipals, municipalities to discuss this further. DEP is basically telling us they're throwing this at the homeowner and they're saying, well, you know something, you don't, the homeowners don't have to do it. It could be the municipal people if they do the watershed permit, but eventually it's all gonna come back to the homeowner. This is unfair and we're gonna fight it.
Thank you. Next is Shauna Heisler, followed by Michael Dalio.
Hi Shauna, you should see a box asking you to join as a panelist. If you could click yes and join us, then you will be able to speak. Mary Beth, do you wanna move on to Michael while we work out the tech issues?
Sure. So we will go to, now to Michael Dalio. And, um, after Michael, we will try for Shauna Heisler again.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, can you see me?
Yes.
Okay.
Picture, a picture.
I'm a resident of Dartmouth, Mass and do not approve, support, or agree with either of these proposed regulation changes. The proposed regulation changes were drafted without the involvement of the local communities that we, that I'm a part of. And it is abundantly clear to everyone that attended the January eighteenth informational session that these proposed regulations were rushed through as a negotiated response to a radical lawsuit filed against DEP by the Conservation Law Foundation. Regarding the proposed changes to Title V, the substance of this is a one-size-fits-all approach and does not take into consideration at all the specific location geology of any of the existing septic systems and as such is severely deficient in any scientific approach. I have asked this question publicly, what specific testing, such as a dye test, was done on any individual septic systems installed in highly impervious soils such as glacial till or clay, which is what my system is installed in? That excessive nitrogen is getting into the estuary for you to determine this one-size-fits-all approach. The MEP report of two thousand and thirteen of the Westport River, page thirty-four states that directly measured septic system and pericapital loads on Cape Cod. Cape Cod is a predominantly very pervious sand, while the soil in the Westport River and Slocom River watersheds are highly impervious glacial till and clay. Therefore, this data is not accurate and cannot be used to determine septic loading in the referenced watersheds. What is the value of excessive nitrogen level being dispersed from a septic system one hundred feet away? Most of the systems involved in Westport and Dartmouth have onsite domestic water wells one hundred to two hundred feet away and in all locations with properly maintained and functioning systems. There is no discernible nitrogen level in the water. What other chemical imbalances could be the problem other than nitrogen? What does your statement best available nitrogen-reducing technology mean as a numerical number? Thank you.
Thank you. So next we will go to Shauna Heisler, who will be followed by Paula and Carl Swanson.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I am Dale Heisler. Um, Shauna has asked me to do this. We live in Hyannis and, uh, have a couple of questions. We have a, a septic system that's not very old. We live a couple miles from the nearest coastline. One of the things that I have observed, um, since coming to the uh, Cape, um, is that, uh, I remember back in the early eighties when there was a real building boom, a lot of tearing down of woods, putting in spec houses and all. Wasn't hearing any talk of, uh, water quality. Uh, I hear a lot of talk about adding more housing at this time, which seems like an amplification to the problem. Uh, even at places like Twinbrooks, which is under discussion on, uh, in Hyannis at this time of adding hundreds of more uh, dwellings, um, that would be on septic system, as I understand it. The sewer system work in this area, which is underway, seems to be going at a near glacial speed. And, uh, yet its listed cost is uh, about half of what you're talking about for the installation of the septic system modification. So my question that I have that I never hear is why isn't the amplification factor of adding more housing before you have solutions to the existing problems being brought up? And also, how about, uh, things like fertilizers to lawns, you know, things like that? Uh, I never hear that addressed very much, except for the, uh, perhaps the phosphorus, uh, containing compounds. But nitrogen seems to come up a lot and I don't see any restriction. In fact, I see more and more application. Fewer old Cape lawns than there were in the fifties and sixties and seventies. Uh, more sprinkler systems and more, uh, nitrogen application. And I would like to hear, uh, if that is also going to be addressed as well as the, uh, unlimited endless, uh, sprawl of housing that, uh, is has been underway for decades and shows no sign of letup. It seems that would, uh, need to address the nitrogen problem, the water quality problem before we, uh, amplify the problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Chris Michaud. And if anyone else on the webinar wishes to, um, make a comment, please raise your virtual hand now. If you are on your phone, you can do that by hitting star nine.
Christopher Michaud, Town of Dartmouth Health Department. So I would like to know where the department arrived at the five years. Where is the science behind the five-year mandatory upgrade requirement in option one? At none of the department's informational sessions or at their alleged stakeholder meetings with the municipalities, did they provide us with the science where the five years come from? But we know where the five years comes from because that is in what the department has been hiding under the former leadership of Commissioner Sueberg. You see, the documents at the Barnstable County Superior Courthouse reveal that Mass DEP, upon immediately being served with the notice of intent of litigation from the Conservation Law Foundation, surrendered and gave ultimately the five years. But what we also know is that Mass DEP has an ulterior motive of circumventing Proposition Two and a Half by putting a burden which was expressed at that meeting in Falmouth in which one of the subcommittee members spoke and mentioned what the true motives that the DEP didn't want the five years. These proposals have a defect and the process must restart. We have filed an open-meeting law complaint against Mass DEP and we await their response. Furthermore, they have withheld records and today marks the eleventh day where they have not even responded to the, to the Secretary of State. Nor has the acting commissioner responded despite his awareness. This is unacceptable behavior as well as the deceptive practices of former Commissioner Sueberg, where he did not tell municipal officials on June first what his true motives were. Lastly, we know that the department has circumvented three-ten CMR fifteen-point-zero-four-zero on the advisory committee requirements that are bestowed on the commissioner to appoint members, which he did not, to advise him on proposed revisions. This proposal has defects. It will result in litigation. It must stop and the department must make right to its constituency and live by its mission statement. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else online who wishes to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand. So next we will have Murphy M.I. is the ID, followed by William Grant.
Hello, if you could please turn on your, uh, unmute your microphone, please. Thank you. Hey Mary Beth, can we move on to William while Murphy works out their microphone situation?
Yes. So next will be William Grant and then we will try back to Murphy.
Hello?
Hello.
My name is William Grant. I have heard the arguments against the proposed regulations. And I am not a scientist. I'm a resident and we have to do something. And I heartily approve of the DEP taking this action and moving forward. We should not let the perfect be the enemy of the good. This is a sound proposal that will be refined as it's implemented. And I fully support your efforts. Thank you for what you're doing. That's my comment.
Thank you. So next we will go to Murphy M.I. if they are ready. Will be followed by Trish Dooman.
Uh, let's give it one more speaker, Mary Beth.
Okay, let's go to Trish Dooman. If anyone else wishes to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand. That is star nine if you are on a phone.
How do I minimize this then?
Trish, we can hear you.
I am trying to actually minimize the screen so I can, cause I had my notes on, um, and I'm trying to minimize the screen somehow. No, it's not letting me. No, it's not letting me. Oh wait, oh, view. Zip full. Okay, I got it. Sorry about that. Wait a second. So we are opposed to the, to the proposed changes. If this passed, it will be a terrible financial burden for homeowners and cause many to be forced to sell. These regulations are based on assumptions that seem to be somewhat flawed and do not address other sources of nitrogen, which seems to be an important factor. The regulations do not even address multi-units, commercial entities, farms, et cetera. They are unfairly targeting homeowners in this regulation and the costs are phenomenal, both upfront and annual with no consideration of season, seasonal or summer homes that are only used three months out of the year or season, seniors living in a three-bedroom home or seniors on fixed income, et cetera. I could go on and on, including how there are not any effective systems that at this time and most are still under consideration. We are concerned with vendor price gouging from installers knowing, knowing it is a mandated requirement. We support cleaning our water, but it should be done with a holistic statewide plan since it is a statewide problem. State money should be used similar to the MBTA and work with the towns to come up with a plan for each affected area. The Cape is frequented and enjoyed by many citizens in Massachusetts. The local homeowners should not be the hostage here and saddled with the financial burden. We also agree with the others that these regulations are being rushed through and the public are not being made aware of these proposed changes and that this is very wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Murphy M.I. has joined. Are you able to hear us? We are not hearing you.
Now that you're panels, you should be seeing a button on the bottom left of your Zoom screen that says unmute. It may be an issue with your microphone as well. I'm not quite sure.
Okay. Have they dropped off, Tori?
No, they're still here. I'm not seeing the microphone for them.
If anyone else on the call wishes to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand. Give a few minutes to try and correct the technical difficulty for this commenter.
Okay, they've dropped off, Mary Beth.
Okay. Christopher Fay. The last hand that we have raised right now, again, if you are online and wish to comment, please raise your virtual hand.
Christopher Fay, I'm a resident of Dartmouth. I echo the comments and concerns expressed by Chris Michaud and Sean McDonald, who represent the town of Dartmouth. As many have mentioned, the soil and groundwater characteristics between the Cape and the South Coast are vastly different. We have a major nitrogen contributor in the New Bedford CSO with millions of gallons of untreated wastewater that are being continually dumped into Buzzetts Bay. When it comes to Dartmouth and neighboring towns, the water study data is also outdated and does not capture a major nitrogen contributor, and that's for-profit organic composting facilities. The proliferation of these facilities has occurred as a result of DEP deregulation, which was done with the knowledge that they would generate a significant amount of excess nitrogen within watersheds that were already targeted for mitigation. This process should have included a plan for onsite treatment of the nitrogen-rich runoff. This was a failure on behalf of the process that DEP put forward. The same onsite treatment options could be employed in agricultural settings, yet DEP has not delivered on that working with its agricultural counterparts. Another failure to address nitrogen. There are very large land areas within the impacted watersheds in Dartmouth that are outside of the control of local regulations. State-owned land, including highways, agricultural areas, composting facilities, and the targeted numbers for nitrogen reductions under the watershed permit option are simply not feasible when you look at the totality of our community-specific land uses. It's a trap and a setup for failure, and that's one of the reasons why the one-size-fits-all approach is simply unfair and not grounded in reality. Furthermore, the watershed permit options on the table, because without that, the septic-only solution would be a clear violation of Mass Proposition Two and a Half and be seen for the unfunded mandate that it clearly is. Where is DEP been all these years working with local and federal delegations and securing funding for this process, which could run into the billions? Nitrogen pollution has been an issue known on the Cape for many years, but it's new news to the South Coast residents and many of our representatives. I've worked with government agencies for over 25 years and as I learn more about this process, it's easily clear to me that it's been one of the most flawed public processes that I've seen in my career. You've moved quickly on this regulations in response to the lawsuit by CLF. While over the 25 years DEP has known about this issue and has failed to address the pollution in a timely manner that works in the best interests of the citizens whom they serve. This leaves many citizens with an impression that DEP leadership has failed at its core mission and that includes the former commissioner and the leadership of the wastewater division. This entire process has lacked transparency, but that's not including but non-limited to the NSA Subcommittee and attempts to remain secretive on that process and that Subcommittee's discussions and correspondence. In fact, there's been numerous members of the Subcommittee Committee that have made comments that have failed to disclose their participation. And there have been numerous records requested, as Mr. Michaud said, that are ongoing, that are resulting in continuous appeals. Not a very good public transparent process and it just really feels like government corruption. So we're going to be looking for accountability for all these parties that are involved at the end of the day on the citizen level. I call for this process to be stopped immediately and an open, transparent and honest process should commence with proper local stakeholder engagement using current data and more common sense solutions that are fair and equitable. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm not seeing any other hands raised. Oh, there is one. If you do wish to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand now. Next is Joan De Colubus.
Hi. My name is Doug Baldur. I'm the husband of Joan De Colubus. I am a resident of Dartmouth and I support Chris Michaud's comments and the previous speaker's comments. And Mr. Michaud led a presentation to the Dartmouth community in an effort to enhance stakeholder and resident engagement. But speaking of transparency, what happens, for example, to the time that we're spending with the DEP now and all the other residents and citizens who are on this call and other calls who are commenting? What happens to those comments? How are they evaluating? Who evaluates them? Is someone keeping score? Is this going to lead to a more resident engagement, stakeholder engagement process? What confidence do we have as residents and stakeholders in our community that this hearing itself will impact and provide a better solution to what many people have raised as a flawed process and more seriously flawed science? What's the accountability? Where's DEP's transparency in the comment process? I'd like to understand that better. Thank you.
Thank you. So once again, I'll ask if anyone would like to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand. We'll wait a moment for that. I'm not seeing any hands being raised. It appears we've heard from everyone who desires to provide comments at this hearing. Before we close the hearing, I will ask once more if any of the attendees want to provide comments, to please raise your virtual hand. I'm not seeing any. No hands. Thank you, Tori. I'd like to thank all of you who provided comments as well as all of you who have been in attendance this evening. All the comments from this hearing and the written comments that are received by 5:00 PM on January 30th will be considered before Mass DEP finalizes the proposed draft regulations. There being no further testimony, this public hearing is now closed on January 24th, 2023 at 7:25 PM. Thank you, everyone.